Hey Colin.
Hey, I think I'm, I think I'm on now.
Hi Tony.
We can hear you.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Hi Dave.
Well, yeah, during the summer we did that too.
Your daughter's bombing you Colin.
I know, I saw that. So our furnace is crapped out, so we're freezing.
Oh no!
Yeah. They think it's just a blower motor or whatever, so they're gonna potentially fix it tomorrow, but...
Fire up your fireplaces.
Yeah, I'm infernoing right now.
Hi Greg.
Hello.
How are you?
Cold, winter is here. It was the great winter till about a week ago.
Uh, yeah.
But it's February, we should expect this.
Exactly.
Go ahead Sue.
I just was saying, I think we have everybody.
Okay. I'd like to start our planning commission, citizen advisory committee, regular agenda for the, or regular meeting for the Monday, February 8th, 2021. Like to call our meeting to order, pledge of allegiance please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
I am here.
Commissioner Gadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioners Chambers and Schraven are both absent tonight, and Chair Barker.
Here. I'd like to make a motion that we excuse Chambers and Schraven from this meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Sue, voice vote please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Chambers and Schraven are absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes. And I need a motion then for the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion for the approval, as is.
Is there a second? I, I would like to make, for discussion here, I'd like to make one amendment, and that would be to add under old business, before a, actually, the annual report by, that Tony Ellis did, to add that in under old business, we'll discuss that very briefly. Any other, any other discussion for the approval of the agenda? Hearing none, Sue, voice vote please.
Commissioner Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula. Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioners Chambers and Schraven are absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the January 11th, 2020 regular meeting, or 2021?
I'll make a motion to approve them.
And a second? And any discussion? Sue, vote please.
Commissioner Cad, Cadwalader.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Gadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioners Chambers and Schraven are absent, and Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Is there any public comment and/or communication concerning items not on the agenda? Greg or Chris, I guess, or Sue? Hearing none, we'll go to old business. Under old business, I'd like to thank Tony Ellis for doing the annual report. And Sue, will you send that annual report electronically to the city commission? And I'll be happy to join if you'll put me on the city commission for next Monday to formally present it, if you'll send it electronically and put me on for that.
Okay.
And Tony, thank you for your work, appreciate it. The next old business would be the ordinance, zoning ordinance definitions. Andy, would you lead us off on that please?
Sure, thank you Mr. Chairman. At the last meeting, you asked where we were with our kind of off again, on again zoning ordinance updating process, and so we went back through the files and I thought maybe we had one or two more chapters to do, but I think we're pretty well caught up. So what we did then, because the last chapter that we had not done was the definitions. And so I know Bruce wanted to hold those until the end, because sometimes it's simplest to do that one last. And we've been keeping up on it as we've worked through the various amendments to all the district chapters and, you know, site plan review, special land uses, general provisions, et cetera. So what we did for you in advance of this meeting is we just went back through the definitions to make sure primarily that all of your land uses were defined. That was, that's kind of the, the primary goal. Most of the other provisions that are in the definition that we, that we rely on and use on a regular basis are pretty good, and I don't really want to change them. Things like how we, you know, measure front yards and what's a front yard versus a side yard, and how you make that determination in various instances, like if you're on a corner lot or something. So just to kind of walk through this fairly quickly, the version that was included in your packets had track changes turned on. And a lot of the stuff that is on is just, you know, fairly minor, like typos, making our capitalization consistent and kind of picky stuff like that. You'll see on page five, we eliminated the definition for the City or Village Zoning Act. And we did that simply because that's an obsolete term. The Act 207 of the Michigan Public Acts of 1921 was repealed many years ago, now it's just the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, which is a combined township rural and city and village zoning enabling act, so that term is, is no longer needed. We added some definitions for terms that were not presently in the ordinance, like dry cleaning and laundry establishment. The term dwelling was not defined, interestingly. So while single, two family and multifamily dwelling was all defined, just a dwelling was not, so we added a definition for dwelling on the bottom of page five. We modified the definition of family at the bottom of page six, so it's a bit more, you know, it's, it's, it's a bit more modern and inclusive to really reflect what case law has determined we need, need to, to be doing here, so typically anything that talks about, you know, that has any kind of number of people listed in it for what constitutes family is not something that I, that I like to include, so basically, talk about a single family dwelling, or a two-family dwelling, well, what does that mean? And basically, it's any group of people who are living together in, in a permanent basis, so that would include roommates, that would include a traditional nuclear family, it would include any other arrangement of people who are living together in a house functioning as a single housekeeping unit, if you will, so it kind of encompasses a lot of different living arrangements that maybe weren't contemplated previously. Some other terms in here, so on page eight, we added a definition for indoor recreational facility, again, that's a term that's used, it's a type of land use that's in the ordinance, that doesn't have a definition, so we added that. Same thing for the definition for a machine shop on the bottom of page 10, and going up over on, onto page 11. That was a term, that's a, that's a land use that's permitted in your industrial districts, but is not defined. Office building, outdoor display of merchandise, or things that are permitted in various zoning districts, but otherwise not defined.
And Andy, I think also on page 11 there, there's a whole raft of the marijuana terms and things of that nature, which I don't think really we had been aware of. You know, we've, we've used them, done it, and all of those kinds of things, but it's nice to have that added now officially.
Yeah, so that was something that, that, that was adopted and, and included in the ordinance when we wrote the recreational marijuana amendment a couple of years ago. But obviously, the focus of our, I mean, of our discussion there was primarily the, the regulatory language that we put in the special land use chapter. I think all of these terms are pretty much right out of the act. So there wasn't really a lot of discussion there, because we weren't inclined to mess with, with that at all, or change the definition for what any of these terms meant, since there is a statute that kind of governs all of that stuff.
Okay.
Um, so let's see, on page 15, we added a definition for a retail store, there's also a definition for retail building supplies, that was just moved, so it's an alphabetical order. Also there, there was a typo in, in a couple of places for what constitutes a residential district, so we fixed those. On page 16, the definition for significant natural feature contains a reference to the DEQ, which is now called the Department of Environment Great Lakes Energy, which is, was recently renamed under Governor Whitmer, so that's just to kind of keep the language contemporary. And again, on page 18, we included a definition for warehouse, a definition for wholesale sales. We did make one change under 2.23, under the definition for yards, I'm on the bottom of page 18. This is kind of picky zoning minutia stuff. But that last sentence, in the case of a corner lot, the rear yard may be opposite either street frontage, we have not been applying it that way based on the definition for our lot lines. So we apply yards in that, if you have a corner lot, the shorter of the two lines is your front, the longer of the two lines is, is also a front. But then the line opposite of that is considered a side, not a rear. So just for how we measure setbacks, we just took that out, so we don't have a conflict in the ordinance there. And that's not something that typically you need to deal with. But for me, it caused problems, so we cleaned that up a little bit. Same thing, definition of yard, yard required, a similar sort of thing. And then zoning act, that's what I was talking about earlier, when we got rid of, of the reference to the 2.24, the definition for a zoning act is the Michigan zoning enabling act, and that's again, just updating the reference to Act 110 of 2006.
Dude, just crap your pants again.
2021. So with that, so this is an amendment to the zoning ordinance, so this is not something that the planning commission needs to act on tonight. I'm happy to take any questions, but otherwise, this is something that you'll need to schedule for a public hearing at some point in the future, either March or April, I think March, we have a few things on our agenda, so something that we could do in April, or, I mean, this doesn't seem terribly complicated, so I guess I'll leave it to the commission to decide when it wants to schedule a public hearing for this particular item. But other than that, this should pretty much wrap up the main zoning ordinance overhaul. There are a couple of other sections that Mike and Sue and I have been discussing that might need some adjustments in light of COVID and things like that, that we'll be looking at over the next month or two, but this should get us, you know, in pretty good shape moving forward. And we'll, we'll substantially complete, you know, the main kind of overhaul that Bruce wanted to do a few years ago when we started this, this, this project, so I will take any questions from there.
Thank you Andy, I certainly appreciate it, I know it has been a long, long stretch here, but we did do a major overhaul of the overall zoning ordinance, and it's nice to see the finish line here before we have to start all over again. Commissioners, is there any reason not to delay this until April, since we do obviously have some things coming up in March? I don't see any great need to get it to the city council before then. And, and if we have our public hearing, can they, can they take it then on the second meeting in April, Andy? If we do it?
Yeah, yep, so they can, they can act on it pretty much as soon as I get it from you, there's no reason to, for them to delay.
Okay, alright. Commissioners, is there any, any, any thoughts on this that I'm missing? Hearing none, do we need, we don't need to take a vote on this, do we?
No, not right now.
Okay, so will you schedule it then for the April meeting, and Andy, you'll do the notices and all of that, that it'll be an open meeting in, in April for that?
Okay.
And your second part of this was training, questions, topics you wish to discuss, or we wish to discuss in future meetings. Again, commissioners, do you have anything? I frankly, I think we're on summer vacation at this point for about a year or so, we, we've done, we've done our jobs.
Yeah.
Collectively, and, and I mean that with Andy particularly helping us through this. And I, I, I think we're okay for right now.
Yeah, and I, I, I asked that Sue put this on, on the agenda, just because I know, you know, Amanda specifically, a while ago had asked, just like, you know, if we have questions, and how do we learn more, and things like that, so this is on here primarily just to kind of ask the planning commissioners that this isn't something you have to go right away, but if you think of something over the next, you know, three, four weeks that you want to know about, or something that you think would be useful information to have as a planning commissioner, either bring it to the, to the next meeting, or let me know, and I can do some research and, and get you some answers to questions that, that you may have. And I think that as a kind of regular item for the planning commission, especially when, when we don't have a particularly heavy agenda, that if we kind of have a list of topics that the planning commission would like additional research or training on, that would be a good way to, you know, use some of those lighter meetings, we can take, you know, 20 or 30 minutes and dive into one of these topics, and you guys can answer questions, and you guys can ask questions, and I can hopefully answer them and provide you with whatever information you need.
Andy, that's a great idea, and as far as I'm concerned, commissioners, if, if you think of something, just send an email to Andy and to, I guess, to all of us. And then we can get it scheduled on the, on the meeting too, that, that's helpful to know we're gonna talk about something. And that way too, you, you, you don't have to, you know, bring it up at a meeting, and then two months later, we finally end up talking about it. You can just send it right straight to, to Andy and to Sue and myself and the rest of the commissioners. That way we can speed it up and hopefully get the answers that we all want and need, frankly, to do our job, so thanks.
And if I don't hear from you guys, I can just make up something for you and just, I can come up with topics. But I'd like to have you guys make sure that you're getting your questions answered, so.
Okay.
Right's out there.
Thank you, thank you. I think Tony actually had a question last time around, which was with the feather sign, so that, maybe, maybe we can take a look at that in, in April too, or earlier, or whatever, but I think that was, that was one that was brought up before, so and, and it's been around for a couple of go-arounds, so that would be a good one to just kind of start off with, I think.
Okay.
Thank you. That brings us to new business. 225 South Washington, initial discussion, site plan review, rezone or text amendment. Chris, I know you're on, and I believe Greg is on as well. Could we have one or both of you, if you can just take a few minutes, and just tell us in general terms what you want to do? Go ahead Chris.
Yep, I'm looking to move my, right now I have a tow company that we also do auto and small engine repair out of my barn. I'm trying to get a better location, and my township doesn't allow impound yards. So I'm working with Greg to do an impound yard slash auto small engine repair shop out of his building.
Okay, and that's on South, uh, at 211 South Washington or 225?
225.
225.
And there's two buildings there, as I, if I recall. Greg, do you have anything to add? No, he is going to be leasing, if it's approved, just one of the buildings there. Using it for his business, it's similar to what we've done in the past there, we had a mechanic working for us that did repairs in that building. And now we had some retired vehicles setting in the yard, so it's gonna be fairly similar, but I know the, the zoning has changed a lot recently, so I'm not exactly sure what's allowed, but that's the story. Okay. Andy, do you want to walk us through it then, please, thank you gentlemen?
So the reason why I have this on the agenda, normally, we would just have them submit an application, and they've actually done that a couple of weeks ago, but the, so the issue is that if you'll see in your packets, there should have been a fairly short staff memo for me that kind of outlines the issue here, so the property is zoned light industrial, and there's only a handful of properties in the city that have that designation. Most of your industrial property is just under the general industrial zoning district. But the issue is that Mr. Nelson wants to establish a towing facility here, and towing facilities aren't permitted in light industrial, they're permitted in C3 as a special use, or under the general industrial district as a permitted use that is still subject to the specific requirements. So I feel like, I, I don't know why they're not permitted in light industrial, and I don't really have an issue with them being in that district. And so I guess that, what I want the planning commission's input on is how you would like this to proceed, or what I guess you, you feel would be most appropriate, one, one track would be to, you know, we can schedule a public hearing to rezone that property to the general industrial district, in which case the towing service would be permitted by right, subject to certain conditions. Or we can amend the text of that light industrial district to permit towing facilities, either by right or by special use. I think either one of them is probably a, a, a workable solution, but obviously for us to know what to set on the agenda, and what to, you know, request for Mr. Nelson, but we'd like some preliminary direction from the planning commission as far as how you want to proceed, and frankly, if you, you know, don't think that you want to do anything, you can always just do nothing, and in that sense, then Mr. Nelson would have to look elsewhere for a towing service, so I feel like it's probably okay at that site, if there's some, you know, screening and things like that, and we've talked about that, I met Greg out there a couple of months ago, and we walked around the site a little bit and talked about it. And so I just want to get this on your radar, get some preliminary input from you, and a direction on how you'd like to proceed. And then we'll kind of handle it from there, and we are anticipating on having this on your agenda probably in March, if you opt to move forward with this.
I, I, I guess I would lead off the discussion here. I, my, my feeling would be to not rezone it. First of all, it is light industrial now, and that's certainly what it is down there. There is no industrial, basically, what it says here, that there was south and west, that there was industrial, well, there's one building really that is industrial there, and that's the Flat, Flat River Electrical Building, that's it, there, there is just nothing. And there are houses right next to it, obviously, on both sides of it. So the residential is right there, to go all the way to an industrial and to rezone it, that I think is an overkill. So I, I, I guess I would, my preference would be to amend it so that the towing service would be available in the light industrial district. Andy, you know the districts better than I do, how many light industrial districts would that affect? Are, are there any that we, we would be creating a problem somewhere else?
No, I mean, there's certainly more light industrial property in the city than there are industrial properties. Check my map real quick, I want to say that there are probably fewer than, probably say there's 10 light industrial district properties in the city. Most, almost all of your industrial property is in the general industrial district. There are two light industrial properties on Boz Road, like down by Ronde Tire, I think that's a light industrial, there's two right there on the corner. There's these two. This one, and then the one directly south of it are both light industrial, and there might be a couple others, but I mean, it's a pretty short list. So I agree that if you're just looking to kind of minimize the impact, adding a towing service to light industrial would probably have a lesser impact in the sense that, you know, it's not gonna have a, a big impact citywide, and most of those other light industrial lots are pretty small. Versus if you rezone this one to industrial, you're having a smaller impact geographically, because you're only talking about one parcel when you rezone. But you are opening up this property long-term to any industrial use that would be permitted. So the light industrial district does contemplate a slightly more restricted version of those uses, and so in that sense, if there's general concern amongst the planning commission with regard to the houses that are next door and everything, and behind it, that could certainly be an appropriate path.
One more further thing that I, my recommendation would be to use, not to make it permitted, but to make it the special land use. That way there's, we're, we're looking at it, because there's so much residential right there. I, I, I just feel like it's the latest way that we can go here and still get the, the job accomplished, I guess. Those are my thoughts. Let's see, other commissioners, any, any thoughts on this?
I got a question, Greg, maybe you can answer it. What is the building, or what has the building been used for in the past? To try to keep the norm of the environment, what, what has been going on there in the past, I guess?
The building that Chris intends to use was previously the Lowell Light and Power building up at the end of Washington Street, which I purchased and tore down and had reassembled on this lot. At that time, it was zoned industrial.
At that time, it was zoned industrial and there was some reason that we. Had it rezoned to light industrial. I don't know if it related to building placement or. What the reason was, but it was probably ten years ago that it was rezoned to light industrial. The building has been used for repairs to vehicles. I had Dean Heiser working for us and he would repair our trucks and stuff in there. And extra vehicles were parked there in the, in the area. It has had a lot of use. It's an extra building for us. And Chris approached me and asked if I'd be interested in renting it, so we thought we'd take a look at this and see. There is, you know, concern about the residential. There is, it's kind of an odd residential strip there because we're on the south side of them and you got Huntington Bank on the north side of. So they're kind of sandwiched right in between a couple of commercial type applications.
I've been looking at the Google Maps, trying to figure out what is going on there. And you've got houses, then you got Huntington, you got, yeah, that's why I asked the history of it a little bit.
Yeah, King Millings right around the corner. Yeah, but that's, that's across the river, actually.
Well, they got a big pole barn over there.
They got a pole barn down there too. But yeah, that's, it, it's out of sight entirely and the, the only other thing is on the north side, I guess it would be. Where the, what would that be? The east side maybe, where the houses are on Front Street, they're, they're, they're right there too. So there's houses all the way around. Greg, another question for you, the second building on the site here that we're, that I'm looking at. What, what's in that building? Is that going to be used? I see there's a gate there and all of that. I, tell us. Tell us what, give us the scoop on what's going on there.
Right, I have some plumbing stuff in the larger building that Chris would like to rent. So I will be moving stuff over to the other building. The gates are proposed, if this is allowed, then that's, there are currently no gates there yet.
Right.
But that's a, a two-story cement block building. It used to be the lumberyard years ago. And there was actually a rail spur that came onto the lot through that new building. And they took that out, now it ends across the street, but. The second building is pretty much storage of plumbing materials at this time.
It actually makes a nice buffer between that and the house on the corner of Kent there, Kent and Washington. Makes a nice buffer. Tony, does that answer your question?
I, I have another question, Andy. We, we rezoned or we did something special for. Three or four houses on Main Street a little while back between Amity and Smith, I believe. What, is that similar to this situation or can? Back that to be?
Well, so what, what we did there is we actually, there, so there were several. Single family homes on Main Street, they were all zoned like highway commercial C three. They were all legally non, non-conforming and none of those property owners could do much with their houses. And many of them were having a hard time getting a mortgage secured because. If the house burns or whatever, then they're not allowed to put it back up. And so what we did there is there was a district that had already been created in the zoning ordinance years ago called, I think, Neighborhood Commercial. And so we applied that designation to those properties and allowed single family residences in that district, so. It's a little bit of a different situation in terms of the, of the problem that is present. But this is kind of similar in the analysis and that, and that we're really. You're kind of focusing on what the potential impact would be and how, how you can minimize that. Object, you know, particularly for those who are nearby and how you can minimize the. You know, potential long-term citywide consequences and both of those situations, both that one and this one. You know, I think that our desire and I think, you know, it sounds like at this point the commission's desires to. Kind of minimize that as much as we can for the surrounding property owners. So they're, they're, they're similar, but they're not quite the same, the same situation.
I just didn't want to get into crap again, like, you know, if we change something that. These houses are not going to be able to. You know, refinance or do whatever they need to.
Yeah, so I don't think this is going to affect any of the, any of the houses around there, so what, what, what might happen is that if. If the planning commission moves forward and makes a towing service a special use in that district. When we publish notice for this in a week or two, everyone within three hundred feet of this property, which will include that entire block. And, and some others will, will, will get a notice that says, hey, if there's a towing facility proposed on this property. And I would anticipate that we'll get a few of those people at the meeting next month. Curious, asking questions, expressing concerns perhaps, you know, I don't know what the level of interest is, is going to be, but. The special land use process will allow you to address those concerns through. Whatever means you feel is appropriate, so if they're concerned about, about noise or about visuals, we can certainly talk about fences. You know, landscaping and screening. You know, hours of operation and all that kind of thing, so. So that, that we can ensure that not only this applicant, but future property owners who are operating a similar business there. You know, do so in a manner that's harmonious and appropriate for its location.
Any, any commissioners, any other questions? Chris or Greg, any questions at this point?
Nothing.
No.
Andy, do we, we don't have to do anything at this point, right? You're, you're going to come back with a, a tax amendment? And asking for a special land use?
Yep, so if, if what I'm, the, the direction that I'm gathering here is a planning commission would like. To keep this light industrial, will write a tax amendment that would permit a towing service as a special land use in that district. And so at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing on both the, the tax amendment. Then also a public hearing and site plan review for Mr. Nelson's application. And then if you approve, so we'll do the, we'll do the tax amendment first. If you approve that or if you recommend approval of that. If you also approve Mr. Nelson's application, then we would add a condition that obviously that. Approval will not become effective until the reason, until the tax amendment is also effective, so we can do them both at the same time. But the special land use will be, will be conditioned on the tax amendment being adopted by the city council and becoming effective.
Okay, so that makes sense to everybody?
I think so, and that would happen shortly after their next meeting or?
So if, if the planning commission recommends approval of the tax amendment, that would go to the city council at their next meeting. And if they adopt it, it would become, it'd become effective about ten or eleven days after that meeting.
Okay.
So based on, on, on that timeline, your best case scenario would be. Yeah, mid to end of March, you could have things in order and then we'll just have to. You know, we'll have to, you know, work through the conditions and all that stuff and, but you'll be on your way at that point.
Okay.
If I'm according to plan.
Sounds good.
Good. Anything else, commissioners or staff? Hearing none, then that's what we shall do. Let's go on to staff report. Thank you, gentlemen, Chris and Greg for coming on board here.
Thank you.
Staff report, Andy? You get first.
Uh, nothing further beyond this. I know we have, I'm expecting at least one other application on our agenda for. March, depending on how the submittals come in. The city council approved a variance for a building on Main Street at their last meeting. I don't know when that site plan is going to come in, but we have three or four items that are out there that we're expecting to come in at some point. There are also, so the, the other tax amendment that I had alluded to earlier when we were talking about definitions. We might be looking at a more. At a clearer way to handle, you know, temporary tents and structures like that, that. We've had some requests for businesses wanting to utilize some kind of temporary structures for. Outdoor seating and outdoor whatever, you know, during, during COVID and. We've been able to work with them, but it's been kind of clunky and it's not super clear as far as. What the ordinance requires, and so that's something that I'm thinking we might want to clean up a little bit. I think that's about it.
Okay, thank you. Sue?
I have nothing further.
Okay.
That for that we did receive another site plan review application. Actually, I took in two today.
Okay. Good, good.
Yep, yep.
Keep them coming. Then we'll go to commissioners. Tony, you get to start this week.
Well, thank you. Did we need to talk about that thing I wrote or?
No, I, in fact, I, I just printed it off this afternoon, so I haven't read it, but it sure looked complete. And Sue gave her blessing to it already. I gotta believe it's just fine, so I'll present it at next Monday's city council meeting.
Oh, I owe Marty one for sure, I tell you that.
Yeah.
Thank you for nominating me, Marty.
Well, we appreciate it. Yeah, that's always a fun job for everybody. David, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, and I'm good, so who'd I miss? We just lost somebody. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Got a motion to adjourn.
Second? All in favor, please say aye. We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye-bye.